Good evening, those in attendance. Welcome to this evening's special hearing for the condo review board dated Tuesday, November 12th, two thousand twenty-four pursuant to chapter one oh seven of the Acts of two thousand twenty-two. This meeting of the condo review board will be conducted via remote participation. We will post an audio recording, audio video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible, following the meeting on the city of Somerville's website and local cable access government channels. Right, so at this time, Marina, if you can please conduct a roll call vote to ensure we have a quorum?
Okay, Chair Zassal.
President.
Vice Chair Byrne.
Present.
Board member champion. Board member champion. Board member champion is absent. Board member Solis.
Present, sorry, technically challenged.
Uh, Board member Simeon. Board member Simeon. Board member Simeon is absent. With three in attendance, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And on that note, we will call this meeting to order. And the first item on tonight's agenda is a compliance item, and that is the review of twenty-nine Everett Avenue. And we have the, I believe, we have the tenants present for twenty-nine Everett Ave who've requested to speak to the board regarding a compliance issue and/or concerns at the property.
I will unmute the tenants representatives.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
So my name is Courtney Lebon. I'm an attorney at Cambridge and Somerville Legal Services, and I'm here on behalf of Sean Durant and Anne Marie Keys, the former tenants of Unit One at twenty-nine Everett Avenue. My colleague Daniel Jacobson is here on behalf of Lauren and Raymond Sledge, the tenants of Unit twenty-nine R, and he will be speaking in a little bit about their situation. We are here today because we believe the tenants' rights pursuant to the Somerville condominium conversion ordinance have vested by reason of the owner's multiple actions demonstrating intent to convert the building to condominiums, including service of the tenant notification form that the owner, and that the owner has violated those rights by, one, serving no cause notices to quit on both tenants; two, serving summary process summonses and complaints on both tenants; three, entering a summary process case against the tenants of Unit twenty-nine R; and four, refusing to offer relocation assistance to the tenants of Unit One, who notified the landlord that they vacated on October fifteenth and returned their key on October eighteenth. We've already submitted a packet of documents in support of our position, including evidence related to the owner's intent to convert and the eviction paperwork. Having reviewed the owner's opposition statement, he does not deny that he intended to sell to a buyer who intended to convert the building to condominiums, and he admits that he facilitated that in part by serving the tenants with a tenant notification form in August. The owner really only argues that since the buyer apparently no longer intends to convert, it is unfair that the tenants' rights have vested. However, the ordinance is very clear on this point. Under seven dash sixty-four J, tenants' rights vest at the time of intent to convert, and under seven dash sixty-four K, a landlord may rescind their notice of intent to convert, but the tenants' rights, other than the right of first review, will remain in effect. The owner does not offer an alternative reading of the plain language of this ordinance. At this time, I would like to turn the floor over to Mr. Durant to briefly explain the series of events related to this matter as to his tenancy of Unit One at twenty-nine Everett Avenue.
Okay. Mr. Durant, you have the floor.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thanks for giving us the time today to talk. I just was going to give you a timeline of the events, so you can sort of see how it all played out from our angle. So it first started May second. Charlie, the landlord, the current landlord, told me over the phone that we had one year either as tenants for Kristen, who was the potential buyer, or as his tenants while he fixes to sell in a year. And then he mentioned that Kristen wanted to meet us. So three days later, we met in our home with Charlie and Kristen, and she instead told us that she was not taking tenants on and that she'd give us ninety days. We were shell-shocked, and we were standing there in the living room, and she asked if that was okay. We said, do we really have a choice? And we were very upset after this meeting, as Charlie said nothing while he stood there. And then the next I talked to Charlie was May seventeenth. Over text, he mentioned that we would need to be out by July first. So we started looking for an apartment immediately, because by that point, it was already end of May. May twenty-second, over text, Charlie, the landlord, asked if they could bring architects over to look at our apartment, and that official notice will be sent soon. At that moment in time, we weren't really sure what official notice meant, so we were just waiting. On May twenty-fourth, we met with Charlie and Kristen, or I did, out front of the apartment. They met with a few of the other tenants as well before with me. And after the architects walked through our apartment, they didn't say much. And Charlie mentioned that he needed to change or to get new lawyers, because Kristen's lawyers said that they couldn't represent him throughout the process. So at that point, he told us that the timeline may change, but he was very unsure about it. So we were still unsure about the July first date. At that time, at that meeting, Kristen, the buyer, she mentioned that under the condo conversion ordinance, that she would owe us a fixed rate by Somerville Rule. I asked how much. She said it would be around seventy-two hundred for us. Charlie then told me that she plans to redo the place similar to her previous condo projects in Lexington, and he didn't go much further than that. So we were still unsure about the date, and by June twenty-ninth, we were still waiting on official notice of the ordinance. We rented a new apartment, being unsure about the July first date and not wanting to lose a good option that we found. But at that point, we also kept renting at Everett Ave, because we wanted to explore certain options. Then August third came around, and we received the condo review board tenant notification form, along with an affidavit. It was dropped through our mail slot at twenty-nine Everett Ave. And the affidavit asked us to waive our right to stay for five years and also our right to purchase, which we were interested in exploring. Charlie asked over text to deliver the signed forms to his house by August twentieth. So at that point, we looked into the ordinance, and I had spoken to Marina on the condo board a few times, just asking what our actual rights were. And on August nineteenth, we sent a letter negotiating a buyout. We were, it was based on giving up the right to purchase that we were actually interested in, and also the right to stay a little bit longer if we needed it. So those rights held a lot of value to us. I had, I lived in the house growing up, and then also Annie and I lived there since twenty seventeen as well. So we had been in the area for a long time. I, me and my family grew up in this neighborhood. So we wanted to see what the right to purchase looked like. So we sent a letter to Certified Mail on August nineteenth to Charlie. He received it on the twenty-third, and then on August thirtieth, we still hadn't heard from Charlie after the letter. But I did get a text from the neighbor upstairs, Sharon, who lives in apartment unit two, and she said that Kristen had backed out of the sale and that Charlie was revoking Sharon's relocation assistance that she really needed because of our letter that we sent to Charlie. This damaged my relationship with someone who was like an aunt to me since I was a kid, because we had lived on the same street together for a long time. That same day, we found a notice to quit in the mail from Charlie to be out by October first. And then still hadn't heard from Charlie directly. And by September twenty-seventh, our lawyer had sent a letter to Charlie's asking for the owed relocation assistance, because we hadn't heard anything. And then we had told them that we would be out by October fifteenth. October eleventh, we received an eviction summons to court in the mail. Still hadn't heard from Charlie aside from this. And then on October fifteenth, we moved out fully and gave our keys to our lawyer, because we did not want the eviction summons to go forward. So we passed on the keys to our lawyer, and then he gave them to Charlie's lawyer. And that's it for our timeline. Thanks so much for taking the time to listen to us. Appreciate it.
Hello, am I, okay, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't on mute. So I just want to emphasize that Mr. Durant and Ms. Keys are a perfect example of why the rights vest at the time of intent to convert. They relied upon the owner and buyer's statements that they had to move out by July first and that they would be offered a relocation payment. And relying on that statement, in large part because they were not given complete information about their rights, they signed a lease for a new unit, which Sean didn't mention, but it's at a much higher rent. And as he said, it's not in his community where he's lived for a long time. And they ultimately moved out. The displacement that this ordinance intends to protect against already happened to this household, notwithstanding that the buyer has apparently or allegedly changed her mind four months after first informing them of the intent to convert. Changing her mind should not be a basis to eviscerate the clearly stated rights under the ordinance, where they have been plainly impacted by the expression of intent. At this time, I would like to ask Lauren Sledge be allowed to speak now to her tenancy in Unit twenty-nine R.
Sure. I missed the last name, but I believe first name's Lauren, so she has the floor.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, hi. So my name is Lauren Sledge. Myself, my husband and my two adult children, Raymond Sledge Junior and Jade Sledge, live at twenty-nine R Everett Ave, which is a single-family occupancy behind number twenty-nine that's all owned by the same landlord, Charles Giudigian. On May second, Charlie called and said that he was contacted by a potential buyer and that she wanted to come by and look at the property and asked if I would be available on May fifth for them, for for the buyer to come. So Kristen and a gentleman, I believe his name was Ron, came out to look at the property. And then when Charlie left, he said that he would be in contact and let us know what the outcome was, depending upon what their offer was for the property, if they were interested in buying it. May tenth, he called and informed me that she is going to buy it and that we would have, quote unquote, about sixty days to leave. He, I then received a further text from him, asking if he and Kristen could come out on May eighteenth, that she wanted to have a follow-up conversation with all of the tenants. They came out on May eighteenth, and at that time, informed us that the timeline was changing and that we would have thirty days to leave, that we would need to be out by July first, because she wanted the property delivered empty. In the meantime, I had been in touch with the Somerville, with the Housing Office there, the Housing Stability Office. I had come in and spoken to a woman in there by the name of Yana Shakes, just concerned with what my family was going to do if we were indeed displaced because of the purchase of the house. He said, you know, she said that I had about thirty days. They'd give me a few extra days before they had somebody come in to put our stuff out on the curb. On the twenty-second of May, I received a text message. I asked, you know, was, on that day, I asked them, was there going to be some sort of official notice that we would get, because I may need it to, you know, help find affordable housing in Somerville? And Charlie texted me on the, on May twenty-second, saying Ricardo, I'm not even sure who that is, will be sending out notice today, and then we never got a notice. We then got another text from Charlie, asking if we would be available on May twenty, he wanted to come out on the twenty-third. I had doctor's appointments, so we agreed for them to come out on the twenty-fourth for Kristen to come out with her contractor and some architects. And they, they came out. I know that they had looked at the front house. They came in, looked where my family lives, walked around, took measurements, photos, you know, from the basement all the way upstairs to the second floor. And then I didn't hear anything again after that until June. So I never got any kind of notice from anybody. Then on June seventh, I got a text message from Charlie, asking the names of everybody that, that lived in the unit here. So I returned the text with all of our names. Then I didn't hear anything again until July twelfth. I've always been the breadwinner in my household. And a couple of years ago, I had some significant health issues, which forced me out of work and onto social security disability, which was a a long process to get approved for disability. And I was in contact with Charlie about rent money that was owed. And when they came out on May eighteenth, Charlie and Kristen were sitting at my dining room table, and he told me not to worry about the overdue rent money that I could, I, I would, I had applied for RAFT to help me with the overdue rent money. And he told me that to cancel the application with RAFT, not to worry about the overdue rent money, that I could, he found out that I could get that assistance towards first last security elsewhere, so not to worry about it. I didn't hear anything from him from the end of May, the, about any us having to leave. I got the text June seventh, asking who lived here. And then on July twelfth, I got a fourteen-day notice to quit for the non-payment of the same rent that he told me not to worry about. And I was away visiting my, my adult daughter, my grandson in Pennsylvania. So is, I sent him a text message. As soon as I came home, I went and paid, I, I got a cashier's check, because my, my social security had gone through, and I went and dropped a cashier's check off for the, the entire amount to Charlie's door. I didn't hear anything else from him again until August first. He called me to tell me that he planned to come, come over the weekend with a packet from the Somerville condo board that needed to be filled out and an affidavit saying that my family gives up rights that would be afforded to us by the condo board, and that he wanted those signed and that they needed to be notarized. And I informed him that I wasn't comfortable signing anything without having an attorney look at it, and that if he could please just leave it for me. You know, I, I would, I would have, I would have an attorney review it. I didn't, he said that he would let me know which day he was coming and that he would drop the forms off. But that he wasn't playing games, that I had one week to sign these forms, or I was forfeiting any relocation money that would be afforded to me under the condo ordinance. I texted him that Saturday, asking, was he coming that day or on Sunday? Because my grandson, now at this time, was staying with me, because my daughter came home, because she was in a friend of hers wedding. He texted me back that he knew that my grand, he put in the text, my grandchildren, but I just only have one grandson, was there and to enjoy my time with him, and that the law office would send out the paper, send the paperwork out to me on Monday. On Monday, I found four envelopes in the vestibule of, of the house, one addressed to each one of us in the house, and there was no affidavit in the envelopes, just the paperwork from the, from the condo, from the condo review board, you know, asking that each adult member in my household fill out a packet and to return it either to the landlord or to the, the City Hall Annex. So each one of us filled them out. I brought them to, to City Hall Annex. The condo board was closed the day that I came. I think they had left early, because it was a Friday, so I had spoken to a gentleman in the Housing Stability Office. I left the paperwork with him. He put them in the mailbox for the, for the condo board and sent an email, which he CC'd me in, to Marina, saying, you know, that I was in there and that I dropped the packets off. And then on August eighth, when I, I had read in the, in the condo packet that if anybody in my house is, if, if we fall under low income, or if anybody in my house is considered disabled, that the landlord should be notified and, you know, that if he wanted proof, that I would have to provide proof to him. So at the beginning of August, when I paid my rent, I put a letter in the envelope with my rent check, and I dropped it off at Charlie's house, saying, you know, that I was indeed deemed disabled by the Social Security Administration as of December of two thousand twenty-one, and that my household falls well within the guidelines listed on the condo packet for low income. He texted me back on the twelfth, saying that he got the rent and that he got my letter and to please make sure that I dropped the packets off to the Somerville condo board before August twenty-third, and I just texted him back, saying that I had dropped them off to the condo board on August ninth. I didn't hear anything else from him again until August twenty-ninth. He sent me a text saying that he had an update and to please call him. When I called him on August twenty-ninth, he informed me that Kristen, the potential buyer, was pulling her purchase and sale, and he said that it had to do with the tenants on the first floor, trying to extort him for relocation money, and that if we stay, we may have to pay market rent. And within six hours after that conversation, the constable was at my front door, serving a thirty-day notice to quit, saying that we needed to be out by October first.
Thank you very much for that testimony.
And I believe Daniel Jacobson would like to say something.
Okay. Daniel Jacobson, you have the floor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you. Based on the facts that have been testified to today, the owner demonstrated an intent to convert under the ordinance as of May two thousand twenty-four. His behavior met multiple factors defined within the ordinance's definition of intent to convert under section seven sixty-three, including but not limited to communication expressly indicating intent and an inspection to facilitate the sale of the units as condominiums, then followed several months later by serving the tenants with a notice of intent to convert and with an affidavit that would waive the rights under the ordinance. Although it is our understanding that an application has not been filed with the board, and we have reviewed the affidavits from the owner and the buyer, indicating that they have rescinded their intent, the rights of the tenants have nevertheless vested under seven sixty-four subsection J. We are therefore asking the board to affirm that these rights have vested, affirm that the owner may not proceed with the summary process actions, and affirm that the owner is immediately obligated to make relocation payment to Mr. Durant and Ms. Keys. We also ask that the board find that both households qualify as low moderate income and/or disabled for the purposes of the relocation payment amount and five-year notice period. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Attorney Levin, any further commentary?
That's all from us. Thank you.
Thank you very much to all the spoke. Before we move on in here from the attorneys representing the property owner, I would just open the floor for the board if there's any questions for the current tenants, former tenants, and/or lawyer representing them. While the testimony is fresh, if there's any questions here before I close the floor. Board member Solis.
Just quickly, thank you everyone for your testimony. The, I'm sorry, I'm bad with names. The family who is, the woman who spoke, representing the family in the rear unit, is my understanding that you guys are still there. I know, still occupying that space, and so, because I feel like what the, Unit One moved to Unit twenty-nine R has stayed. So I'm just curious what it has been like recently, or if you could add anything about how, how it's been lately, I guess, if there have been any further interactions.
There have, can you guys hear me?
Can.
So there haven't been any further interactions with myself or the, the landlord or the potential buyer? I got the, the thirty-day notice to quit. I was in contact with the Housing Stability Office. They then referred me to the Cambridge office, the Cambridge and Somerville Legal Aid Office. And I know that I have to answer to an eviction case on December fifth at the Somerville District Court.
Um. Yeah, Ms. Sledge, to the chair. How long have you been living at this address?
I've been here since February of two thousand seventeen. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Vice Chair Byrne, any further questions?
No, I don't think so. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing there are no further questions amongst the board, I will now grant the floor to the attorney representing the property owner, I believe Attorney Vigorito.
Yes, good evening. Attorney Ann Vigorito for twenty-four Broadway, Somerville, Massachusetts. I'm also joined this evening by Brianna Rowland, who is an attorney in my office as well, as well as Charles Chardian and Kirsten Germano. I will briefly go through a statement of the facts. Mr. Chardian, who's the trustee of the Everbrookable Trust, he is the current owner of twenty-nine twenty-nine, twenty-nine dash twenty-nine R Everett Ave in Somerville. And on October fourteenth of two thousand twenty-four, the condo review board issued a notice scheduling a meeting to discuss the compliance issues with this property. However, no application has ever been filed on behalf of Mr. Chardian, the current owner, nor Ms. Germano, who by virtue of a purchase and sale agreement, may or may not purchase the property. There are various factors that, you know, may or may not have her purchasing this property. And if that's the case, the property will not close. It is my understanding, and Ms. Germano may testify a little more at length, and, and I don't want to put words in her mouth, that you know, it, it may not be a worthwhile situation for her to get into this particular purchase. And it has nothing to do with the condo conversion. You know, our office represents many, many developers, property buyers, owners. It is actually much more lucrative to rental properties these days than condominiums. So I do believe, and Mr. Mano will testify to that, that, you know, the, it was better to own this property as rental property and not that of condominiums. I, I did, or our office did forward a brief, and I, I would direct to the legal arguments, which counsel for the tenants ignored by stating our clients had, or Ms. Germano actually met the requirements of being a vested condominium conversion. As we know, the Somerville's Enabling Statute, the nineteen eighty-five act, was amended to grant Somerville the authority to regularly the eviction of tenants incident to the conversion or sale of condominiums. The case on point, Stephen Bremis versus City of Somerville from two thousand twenty-two. In that court, they emphasized and inferred that the legislator in passing the nineteen eighty-five act intended Somerville to go further in terms of taking measures to protect tenants during condominium conversion. The very learned Judge Camille Uh the very learned Judge Camille Saru emphasized condominium conversion. Uh so the authority of the ordinance is contingent on the presence of an actual condominium conversion that poses a genuine risk of tenant displacement due to the condominium conversion, not to eviction processes or any of that. Condominium conversion. The court was very, very clear. Here, in this present case, the owner nor the prospective buyer are converting the property into condominiums. So therefore, applying the ordinance as provision would exceed the bounds of the authority which is granted under the Enabling Act. You know, we can hear all the testimony in the world, but I do think we need to concentrate on the law and what the legislative intent was here. Um more of that is in my brief. I will, I I and I am a little concerned with the August eleventh twenty twenty four letter that was sent by Sean Durant and Anne Marie Keys. Um you know, and we've seen, I've seen this before. I think members of the board have seen me with other tenants where I hate to use the word extortion, but I I have to say, under number three of that letter, where it's proposed buyout, um the tenants suggest a buyout in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I don't think Charles Chardian has that, you know, there's a mortgage, I do believe, on this property. Even if he sells it, he wouldn't have that kind of money to pay for, you know, a a relocation fee or however, you know, they calling it a buyout. So I I I'm concerned once again, and I I've been like this before this board before, that the ordinance is being taken advantage of and it's not being used, you know, or in its proper manner. Uh that is my concern here. I'm an attorney, you know, I work with facts, I analyze the law, and that's what I'm doing here this evening. So at this time, I'd like to have Mr. Chardian be able to speak and then Kristen Germano and then just to, you know, recap at the end. I I think their testimony is probably most important for the board, and I thank you for your indulgences, and I will mute myself.
Thank you, Attorney Vigorito, for that uh opening statement. And at this time, uh your client, uh I I'm afraid, uh Mr. Charles Chardian, and I'm sorry if I mispronounce that, uh you have the floor.
Mr. Chardian, you've been unmuted.
Okay, I have been, all right. Yes, at the uh beginning of May, I decided I needed to sell the property, whose property I inherited, and I reached out to Ms. Germano because she was interested in purchasing the property. And she said, you know, let's go down and talk to the tenants and I let them know that the property was being sold and Ms. Germano was the potential buyer and that the property will probably end up being rehabbed and that she may or may not seek to turn them into condos. I said that either way, I was selling the property. I had no intention of converting the property into condos and you know, if they were leaving, Ms. Germano would consider relocation costs to help them move out um. Then, over the course of July, not a lot happened. Um then, in August, yes, condo papers were provided to the tenants. We asked them to fill them out and then we would provide the relocation money. In the meantime, I heard from Sean and Annie Keys down below, and they said that they did not agree with the amounts on the forms that the Board of Somerville had in place, that they felt that they were entitled to more and above what was there, and they refused to fill out the paperwork. The owners in the back, the renters in the back house got very aggressive with me and they did fill out the paperwork and return it, but they have been very uncooperative since that time. They have twice in the period of time since two thousand seventeen not paid me rent for over eight months at a time. And I could have very easily had them evicted on both occasions. But I did not. I tried to work with them because of her ongoing disability. Also, three years ago, neighbors on the street complained and said their dogs were aggressive. Did I have the dogs evicted? No, I backed up the tenants. And now they're trying to walk all over me and all I want to do is sell the property and move on.
Uh Mister Judge Judge again, um thank you for that testimony. Um Attorney Vigorito, did you say uh you have your other client uh?
Uh Kristen Germano, uh I know she's on the meeting. I believe she wanted to speak. She is the prospective buyer.
Yep. If she would like to offer a statement, the floor is hers.
Mr. Mano, you've been unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Um, good evening. Um Charlie and I um over the summer, um were put together by a mutual friend. Um he had contacted me that he needed to sell the house. And um so I did come out, go over there on a few occasions, and I did bring um a general contractor and my architect to look and see what could be done. If I were able to do condo conversions over there, um you know, the the tenants would be paid, but after consideration and going through the units, um we decided that it wouldn't work financially to do that. I know he's had a lot of trouble with these tenants. Um the back unit hasn't been paying. Basically, Charlie can't afford to stay there, and um he's been very kind. I really got upset when I heard the lady in the rear say that Charlie said to throw your bags out, or I said that. Um I don't know Charlie well. We just met over the summer, but I can tell you, he's one of the kindest-hearted and generous people. He didn't charge these people much. They paid six hundred in the two family um for each unit, and the back unit only a thousand dollars. Um he couldn't afford to pay his property taxes and do what he needs needed to do to keep the property up because he was charging them so little. Um so to hear that really upsets me because he's really a sweet, kind man and um anyhow, I never promised that I was going to convert this into condos. I did look into it. Um honestly, I don't even know if I'm going to purchase the property. Um and that's just where I stand at this point. Nothing was filed to convert. Um so I don't see how it could be just to pay a condo conversion fee. And that's really basically all I have to say.
Thank you for that testimony, uh Ms. Germano. Uh I believe Attorney Vigorito has her hand up.
Yes, I thank you, Chairman. Uh you know, just to conclude, and you know, Ms. Germano touched upon it. You know, in case, you know, taxes in the city of Somerville and water can be very expensive, as we all well know and you know, it is my understanding, I think that, you know, if Ms. Germano doesn't purchase this property, Mr. Chardian may have to file for bankruptcy. He he's not going to have monies to pay taxes on this house, to pay the water bills or anything else. And my fear is that there'll be a more difficult situation for Mr. Chardian down the road. Uh and you know, I've reviewed this ordinance and you know, it it is very clear, you know. Uh I I think in this situation, you know, if we're going to look at things on a case-by-case basis, the owner, along with a prospective buyer, were very honest and upfront. They they said, hey, let's go out, let's talk to them. Let's take a look at this. This may be a property that's going to be good for a condo conversion. Not all properties do work out that way. And they came to that conclusion. You know, Ms. Ms. Germano could have just come out to the property and not said anything. And you know, she was being very honest, as was Mr. Chardian. And I think, you know, now their honesty is coming back to bite them really hard. And I I once again, I I echo what, you know, the judge in the in the court hearing on the condo ordinance said. A condo conversion has to occur for the tenants' rights to vest. The tenants' rights have not vested here. So I would urge the board to understand that and and not make an arbitrary and capricious, you know, finding that they have vested. Um I have nothing further at this time, but you know, if the board has questions for myself or either one of my clients, uh you know, we are here to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Vigorito. On that note, I'll open uh the floor for uh questions from the board for Attorney Vigorito and her clients. Uh Board Member Solis, the porchers.
Um, thank you. So I guess my question is, based on Attorney Vigorito, your experience, you've been in front of us uh quite a few times. Why why would they present the papers to the tenants regarding the condo conversion if they weren't going to convert to condos?
Hi, Ms. Solis, uh Anne Vigorito. Uh did I say your name correctly? Please correct me because I'm
That's, yep.
So, yeah.
We don't even say it correctly. We've Americanized it. So we just, my family just answers to whatever. So, yes.
All right. Uh so, you know, we weren't involved at that point, um but you know, people and and I'm going to, I'm being very, listen, I'm going to be very frank this evening and very candid. A lot of property owners are very nervous and they want to do everything correctly regarding the condo ordinance, you know. I know Brianna Rowland, who's an attorney in my office, like I said, she's here this evening too, and you know, she can answer questions as well because she really she meets with the clients initially, she goes through the application with them, and you know, we thoroughly explain to them, tenants are entitled to relocation fees. This can happen, that can happen. You 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 really want to make people understand because we deal with people who don't just purchase in Somerville. Uh we get a lot of referrals sometimes because attorneys are like, hey, listen, we're not comfortable, we don't really have a good understanding of the condo ordinance in Somerville. And you know, we wouldn't want someone to be penalized for doing something incorrectly just because they didn't know or understand it. So I I do think to really get back to your question, that, you know, they were, they wanted to make sure they were doing everything correctly, you know, Mr. Chardian did testify and uh, you know, I I think he's falling on some financial difficulties himself and, you know, the sale of the home could get him out of those. And you know, he explained, I think, to Ms. Germano, we should probably do this. And you know, she has said, and she said it in her testimony. Uh you know, she wanted to look at the property to see what the best fit for that property was. You know, we encourage people as attorneys, you know, make sure this property is going to be what you want it to be and you know, a lot of sellers will entertain having, you know, a prospective buyer come out and look at the property and take a look at it. I I mean, it it was very nice, I think, in this situation that they came out and they spoke to the tenants. Sometimes that doesn't happen and, you know, people feel like, the tenants will feel like they're, you know, they are being quote-unquote displaced or lost. No one knew anything. So and I will tell you, it is customary, I I don't do the conveyance thing in the office, Attorney Rowland does, but it is extremely customary um for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts uh for prospective buyer who's purchasing a property just for rentals to say, I want to purchase. They they always, they ninety percent of the time, they want the building empty because, you know, they want to get in, maybe do some renovations, uh you know, and start fresh with their own tenants. So you know, it it is customary, and I think Mr. Chardian has to, you know, looked at, okay, what do I have to do to, you know, make sure that I can go through with the sale of this home? And I think that, did that answer your question or, you know, I can even, you know?
Yeah, it does. I mean, I guess um I'll let my, you know, colleagues ask what questions they have. I'm kind of coming from a perspective of um I think that one side is making the argument that um the intent was stated or expressed, and then one side is making the argument that intent was, but that because it didn't go to the next step, then that intent doesn't need to be sort of, I don't know, doesn't count. Um and so um and I feel very much that intent has been expressed. Um but I would need to look to my colleagues about how the ordinance falls if um if, I mean, if a relocation fee is offered and agreed upon, I mean, I don't know how much more expressed intent you can get with that. I I just don't know what it means if the, if if you know, the buyer changes their mind or the seller changes their mind. Um I so I'm going to have to toss that to my to my colleagues.
And just to, as a little bit of follow-up, so and you know, I use this as an example. And let's say, you know, for sake of argument, let's say Ms. Ms. Germano did in fact file a, you know, application with the board for condo conversion. And let's say she doesn't get um funding, you know, through a bank. The banks are really difficult these days with the rates being you know, higher. It is very difficult to get loans, and if she couldn't close, then uh you know, Mr. Chardian would have, would say, well, I'm not doing the condo conversion, you know, not in his wheelhouse and you know, he wouldn't have the funds to do so. So he would continue to rent. So that's where it's sometimes, you know, even, and that's even going to the next level. You know, I was there in the courtroom when, you know, some of these arguments were made because I did watch this because it was a very interesting case. And you know, the judge was clear, you know. It 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 has to be a condo conversion, which, you know, yes, they took the infancy steps, but they didn't go to the level of, you know, filing, you know, because she decided that the condo conversion wasn't a good idea, you know, for this particular purchase. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Attorney Vigorito. Uh Vice Chair Byrne, any questions, comments for uh?
Yeah, there's a, there's a couple of things, a couple of thoughts that I have, and one is that that um it it seems overall, it's a very unfortunate situation, and um I think that that is where we find ourselves. Um I do think that um that despite um Attorney Vigorito's um case, you know, about um the the owner being a great guy and having problems with finances, that's not something that we should be thinking about. That's not part of what the condo ordinance has to do. We have to, we have to stand apart from that um and make, you know, make decisions about what was actually in the law and not about how this impacts, you know, the the owner at this point. I think, I think I'm correct about that. Um the other thing I wanted, I want some clarification um if from, I I think it's from Mr. Durant, um because it the the accusation that um that the those tenants were um I what was the word they used? Uh uh you know, um trying to, trying to get money out of the the landlord. And I I didn't read that that way. So if I can, if we can go if it's okay to go back to him, I would appreciate his clarification on what his letter was asking for. Because I thought it was, he was stating amount of money that he wanted to purchase the unit and that that's what he was offering, but I maybe I read that wrong. So it, can we get clarification on that?
May I speak to that as his representative and then I can certainly turn to him as well? Um with the tenant notification form, Mr. Durant was served an affidavit asking him to waive all his rights under the ordinance except for the relocation payment, I believe. So asking him to waive his right to purchase, asking him to So, asking him to waive his right to purchase, asking him to waive the notice period, um, for no consideration. He was just told he had to sign an affidavit waiving his rights. He had to return it within a week or whatever it was, within a very short period. And that was that. Um, so, Mr. Durant realizing that there was value to his rights and that he would be giving up something that was important to him, tried to negotiate with the landlord. He tried to negotiate because this might be an opportunity for him to own a home in his community, and that means something to him. Um, and it might be the opportunity for him to stay there for another five years, and that also meant something to him. And he was being asked to give that up for nothing. And so all he was doing was trying to negotiate to something reasonable for giving up those rights, um, after being asked to give them up for nothing. Um, so I hope that answers your question. Um, Mr. Durant, if you have anything to add, feel free to go ahead.
Mr. Durant, anything else to add to that? It's okay if you defer.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Thanks. Uh, no, Courtney covered it. Um, it was definitely a letter not of extortion or anything like that. The, our wording was very calm and we were mentioned, we mentioned multiple times in the letter that this was purely a discussion and we were open to a lot of different things. Um, but Courtney covered most of it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, at this time, we've heard from both sides. We've had the opportunity as a board to, uh, ask questions. Um, as Chair of the Board, um, you know, I like to think I'm very pragmatic in my approach. While I'm I'm sympathetic to both sides and the unfortunate situation that all involved have found themselves in. It it does feel like there was intent to convert from the outset. I guess the question I have for the parties involved, you know, and this is for both sides, you know, is there an opportunity for, you know, a cohesive discussion for, um, the property owner, the current former tenants, um, to come to an agreement that is in line with what the ordinance originally states and calls for. And that both tenants, um, from the documentation I've seen, uh, fall within, uh, the low income and or, uh, disability, um, you know, um, bucket. So, I mean, is there an opportunity for a discussion with honoring the original ordinance and and the dollar amount that would be owed to those, those tenants? Um, to somehow come to, uh, 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 an agreement between all parties. I don't know, I'm throwing that out there for discussion. I'd like to just hear, you know, now since I've, I've had a chance to make a statement, I'd like to, before we hear from the representatives, um, open the floor for board discussion to hear from Vice Chair or Board Member Solis on sort of their thoughts on on the totalitarian of the situation. And then maybe we can hear from, uh, uh, the city attorney.
That is, that's exactly what I would like to hear, Chairman. I I would like to hear from the city attorney. Um, but I, um, I also, I agree with you. If there's some way that we can bring these parties together so that they can reach an agreement. Um, you know, I think that would be really helpful. I'm particularly concerned about, um, the the tenants in in the, uh, the rear, twenty-nine rear, um, because of the disability and the low income, um, you know, situation. And how how can that best be resolved?
Yeah, I mean, according to the ordinance, um, I mean, they're, they're, um, you know, that they would be granted the, the ten thousand dollar payout plus the option to stay five years.
Yeah.
Um, I'd I'd like to maybe get some feedback or, um, commentary from, uh, Joe. City Attorney or or Morena?
Can I just make a quick clarification before Joe speaks? Excuse me, sorry. Um, the ten thousand dollars is a base amount that has been adjusted upwards based on the Consumer Price Index, so based on inflation. So the amounts are actually higher now, um, than ten thousand. It's twelve thousand two hundred something. The amounts are on the board's website, um, under forms and information, um, but I just wanted to clarify that it is higher than than what's stated in the ordinance, just based on the CPI.
Thank you for that clarification. If we could hear from the city attorney?
Sure, uh, so Joe Thiel, uh, thank you, Chair. Um, so I'm gonna try to limit my comments to, I think, some of the legal arguments that have been raised, both in the briefs and in today's testimony. And I think I would like to just take a quick opportunity. I think both of the parties did provide uh, very thorough and well-thought-out briefs, which I think was very much, I know, on the city side staff appreciated. So I just wanted to take a moment, um, for that. Um, so I I I think, you know, all parties were represented well. Uh, but I think really the crux of the legal argument that has been presented is whether the ordinance requires that there is the board's jurisdiction, that there is an active and ongoing application before the board. Um, I do not, I don't know, I've reviewed the parties' briefs. I I do not believe that that is in line with the plain text of the ordinance. Um, really, and I think it does kind of, it hinges upon those sections seven sixty-four J and seven sixty-four K, which say, you know, the rights of the tenants' vest at the time intent to convert is formed. And there, then, the property owners are now stating that there needs to be an active, ongoing conversion. But I think the question of when is there a conversion that the board can regulate is a temporal question, right? It's a matter of timing. Is the timing when there is an active application, or is the timing when there is intent to convert? And I think that in my read of the ordinance, the ordinance is clear that the in the rights under the ordinance vest at the time intent is formed. And that it does, there was no statement necessarily that you need to have an active application. It's a little bit of a separate matter to say, well, okay, regardless of what the ordinance states, have you exceeded the authority that's provided to the city within the, uh, within the nineteen eighty-five Local Act? And I think it's important to distinguish, and I think the attorneys recognize this as well. We're not dealing, th- this ordinance is not enacted under the state condo conversion law or its provisions that allow municipalities to create condo conversion boards. This is a special act that it was enacted by the state legislature, um, for the city of Somerville. And within that special act, there, one of its stated purposes is is the control of eviction of tenants' incident to conversion. So the question for us is now, okay, is this incident to a conversion? And I think that gets, takes us back to the temporal question of, well, what is our rash, what is the rational basis of the city to now say you need to have the timing be at the intent to convert? And I think it's, the ordinance is trying to address the situation where we need to have a mechanism where if you have a property owner that can form an intent to convert, right? So let's, I'm gonna actually try to spell it out in days. We might help with the block of three days. So, we could have a situation where day one, property owner develops an intent to convert. Day ten, that property owner could then state that I'm rescinding my intent to convert. Day twenty, those, that property owner could then take an action to then displace those tenants and evict those tenants. There is nothing under this active, ongoing application set of facts that would say to prevent a property owner for coming in day thirty and then putting an application for the board. And I think that's inherently the the difficulty with arguing that the ordinance needs to be interpreted in a way where there needs to be an active and ongoing application before the board. The temporal distinction, the temporal decision was made in the ordinance that it's actually linked to the time that the intent is formed to prevent those types of situations where you could have a property owner manipulate a situation where they, you know, develop an intent, learn about the protections that are afforded under the ordinance, revoke, take the actions that they need to, to have it be a non-tenanted vacant property, and then come back to the board and reestablish that intent. So does that address, I know it's a little bit complicated, and I just wanna make sure that it it is clear, um, cause I think that that addresses some of the legal arguments that have been made, but happy to take questions from the board.
Um, Jennifer here. I guess my question is, I I feel like if it's not intent, if we don't go by intent when, when I think intent was made based on the 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 renter's testimony. So let's say, like, there's nothing to prevent, like, the the potential buyers on the meeting tonight saying she may or may not continue to buy. So like, where we've already vacated one, we've already uprooted one renter. So what's to prevent another renter coming in? They have an eviction case with the back tenants. They get another renter in, and then they've, she buys it and converts, and they just are a little bit quieter about it this time, and they've gotten around the whole thing. I don't, you know, I don't get it. I don't, I think that's, I mean, that could potentially happen. And so I think that is a case for it's, for the temporal argument. Like, I just, I don't think it's about an actual conversion. I mean, the impact that Mister, hold on, to scroll for your last name, so awful, I'm sorry. Um, the renter in unit one, the, his life has been, and his partner's life has been fully impacted as if the conversion went through, the purchasing conversion went through. So even though they decided in the moment anyways, that they're not gonna do it. I mean, he already took the actions in his life based on it happening. So I guess if there's just like a ripple effect, once intent is made, which it clearly was made, I mean, documents were, affidavits were presented, like, if that's not intent, that's that's intent. So if if once intent is made, i- it once intent is made, then a ripple effect starts of all these actions that impact the tenants that the ordinance is supposed to protect. So to impact their lives and start this huge chain of events, um, and it sounds like some, you know, hostility on both sides, and it's, you know, hasn't been pleasant, um, and then to be able to rescind and say, like, that doesn't count, and like, I'm sorry, it impacted you in ways A through J, but we never really filed. So I guess, I I to, I don't understand how that would would be what the ordinance wants us to hold up. Um, you know, it's not like they're both still there, uh, you know, I mean, one, one unit, like, based on this happening, relocated. So, I guess for me, it would be saying, like, if we don't go by intent, even if we're not saying it has to be a condo conversion in process, there's a middle area that is after intent, actions, renters were impacted as if the conversion went through. So to me, it's like, even if you don't go by starting with, that intent is is all that's needed. In between intent and actually sending in the application is the, all of the actions that impacted the renters in between, and that you can't take back. You know, you can't go back, rewind. So that's already been done. So even though you didn't put it in application, you've impacted people's lives, uh, their finances, their emotional health, their, you know, so I guess that's where I am is, I think it's, it's gone even further than intent. It's gone into what actions have it, what what is the chain of events that have happened? Um, that's how I feel.
Thank you, Board Member Solis. And I I again, I would like to circle back to Attorney Thiel, um, to allow him an opportunity to kind of address the 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 question that Board Member Solis was getting to there. If you can give some guidance.
Um, I might need a little bit of clarification from Member Solis, if she doesn't mind, on kind of that, what's the lingering legal question?
Yeah, so I guess the lingering legal is, I guess it's a hypothetical. I think that if we don't consider intent to, i- if we don't consider that we can uphold him to the ordinance because intent was expressed, but we can't hold it, him, the ordinance, him up against the ordinance because it didn't go through, do we then create a window where they can quickly, within twelve months, get around being held to the ordinance? Because they've got somebody out and somebody in eviction.
So, thank you. Thanks for that clarification. So I think that you are right. I think that that is the exposure point. And, you know, I was on in the drafting room, but my understanding of the ordinance is you link the real, the vesting of those rights at the, at the time of intent to convert because you want to avoid those situations of, well, what happens after the fact, right? What happens? There are these real estate transactions that are complicated. Facts change, things change. And at some point, you need to draw a line in the sand to say, when will when does the ordinance kick in, right? And the city and the city council's policymakers have made a determination that there are benefits towards tenants, and there are, there are benefits towards tenants. And, you know, done a weighing against property owners' rights to say that the time that those protections kick in is at the time that there is intent to convert. Because, right, if you make it contingent upon there being an active, ongoing application, you could have situations, right, where you could do a lot more in the lead up, right, where everybody knows that you're gonna convert to a condo. You take, start taking actions to make sure that the unit is vacant and then decide, okay, the unit's vacant. Now I'm gonna come before the board, start my application, and all of the rights trigger. And I think that's, you know, there it really to me, I wanna be careful not to overstate this point, but I don't think that there is an entirely rational outcome. Uh, looking at the ordinance, the fact that the ordinance provides a certain set of protections for tenants in a unit, and one of the stated purposes is to conroll, control the eviction of tenants' incident to the conversion. If you then state, well, none of these rights actually kick in until you put the application before the board. I don't think that, I don't think, if that is the way that the ordinance is inter, is intended to be interpreted, I actually think it's a much, would be a much more straightforward ordinance, because I think it would be, your board's jurisdiction kicks in at the time someone comes before the board files their application. And I don't think you necessarily need those distinctions of tenanted units versus non-tenanted units. So it addresses your, your question.
Yeah, I think that gives solid guidance. Um,
So, yeah, yeah, I I I just wanna, um, say a couple of things. One is, is that I think, um, in terms of intent, um, the board has been dealing with intent, um, a lot. Um, and, you know, we have had tenants displaced, um, and then the new owner comes in in condos, and it's like, well, the tenants never got the information that there was gonna be, and there was no intent for that to happen. And I think that's one of our frustrations is that, um, you know, intent, what does intent mean? Um, so, so that is, um, one thing I was thinking about and. Um, so so that is um one thing I was thinking about, and I guess um yeah, I'll I'll just leave it at that, I have another thought, but it left me, so.
Mm-hmm, okay. So on on that note, I I mean, from hearing from uh City Legal, and I see uh Attorney Thiel has his hand.
Yeah, Chair Zassol, if I may, uh through you, just one clarification, I think while we're in more of the board discussion period, that might be helpful, I know uh the tenants' representatives have requested that one of the actions that the board takes in response to this hearing is that the owner must dismiss the eviction proceedings against unit twenty-nine R. I think I do want to clarify, what is the board's jurisdiction for those types of actions, and I don't think that that is not an appropriate step for the board to take, meaning basically, the board can't compel the, just I believe this proceeding is in the district court, the board cannot compel an owner to dismiss a case that can't compel the board to, the the court to take a certain ruling, but the ordinance is very clear on what does happen is that if the board makes a determination that a tenant's rights are protected under the ordinance, condo conversion eviction can then be raised as a defense in that in that proceeding, so I think just to kind of want to clarify that legal point is that I think the board would make the board, it, when it's considering kind of the actions, it's more consistent with what we normally have before the board, right, a determination whether intent is is formed, whether a, what rights does the tenant have under the ordinance, what the parties can then do with that written finding of the board if it so chooses, is really a private matter that will then be, have to be raised in the courts.
Thank you for that clarification and and.
Can I um, can I come back one more time? I apologize, I I just, I I remember the thing that I had forgotten, which was um that the that the tenant in um the rear building had filed for raft to, you know, uh help her get first, last, and and um, you you know, security deposit, and that the landlord told her she didn't need to do that, and she could, she had to cancel, she canceled that on the landlord's um suggestion, so I'm just, I I I, you know, this just complicates it more, but I, that was one of the things that really struck me, it was like, here's this person, this tenant who is trying to actively go forward and do what she needs to do, and the landlord says, well, don't worry about that, you you can cancel that.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair, uh Byrne, I mean, it from the testimony I've heard from both sides and the guidance provided by the city staff, is Chair, I think, you know, it it's clear that intent to convert did take place, and that the tenant's rights are product, protected under the ordinance, um and that they both fall under the uh the threshold for the the low income relocation uh and uh timeframe. I mean, we could debate this all night long, but it it's a compliance issue that's pretty black and white. The eviction um stuff and and a lot of the other peripheral stuff that was presented to the board tonight is for a land court or a different court to here, and is not under the jurisdiction of of the condo review board, and I just want to keep it to what the board is is here to to serve, and that's to um ensure that the framework of the ordinance and the compliance of the ordinance is is adhered to, so um, you know, I guess I would defer to city staff if we need to continue to debate the issue tonight, or is there something we could propose, put to vote at this point? Um, after hearing both sides?
Uh, no, you can, you can put to vote, um, and I would just um say that um you should be clear on what your findings are. And um if you have questions about sort of what exactly your your finding.
Yeah, so on that note, I guess um for clarification purposes, both tenants would fall under the uh adjusted uh relocation fee of twelve five?
Uh, it's twelve thousand two twenty-two, I believe.
Two twenty-two. And then the tenant and thirty-nine R uh would be granted a five-year?
Twenty-nine R, yes, a five-year, five-year notice period.
Twenty-nine R, five-year notice period, I guess where I'm the gray area I have is the tenants that have already vacated the unit, there, they would only be um up for the twelve twenty-two relocation fee, correct? Because they're already vacated?
Yes, that's correct. I also, I want to flag two things um for the board, um the first being that um Attorney Vigorito has her hand up, um and the second being that there is a third unit at this property um where the tenant um is, I believe she is present, um but I just want to um note that if if you're finding that tenants' rights have vested, I believe she still lives at the property, um that it would um be for the whole property, not just for the two um tenants that brought forth the compliance matter.
Mm-hmm, and since I didn't see any documentation uh regarding uh low income status.
I'm I'm unaware of her of her status as low income or disabled.
Eligible for the, what is the adjusted current rate on the relocation three thousand?
I'm sorry, say that again?
But is is there an adjusted rate on the?
Yes, so the the relocation fee um for tenants that are not entitled to enhanced protections is seven thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-one cents.
Um, question for uh Chair Zassol for Morena, do we have the authority to increase the relocation fee if if the person has already moved out and they don't get that five years of five-year notice, do we have a way to financially relieve them because they did not get that benefit? I mean, it's not like we can, they're gonna move again back into the house.
There is nothing in the ordinance that would permit the board taking that sort of action.
Okay.
Okay. To the fellow board members, uh are you prepared to put this to to vote on the compliance issues?
Attorney Vigorito has her hand up.
Yeah, I I guess my concern is if we open the floor to Attorney Vigorito, then we're gonna have to open the floor.
Okay, then I'm ready, I'm ready to vote.
Make arguments again all night long, and we'll be here until um December first, so it's your call, I I I'm.
I'm ready to vote, Zach, I'm ready to vote, Chair.
Things go, and we'll we'll, it's another hour of testimony where we'll hear the same arguments. So, and unless you feel persuaded, um, I I'm content, uh after the testimony that I've heard, the evidence provided to the board ahead of time, the clarification from the city staff, um both Morena and um Attorney Thiel, um I'm comfortable with uh making a motion to vote on the compliance. All right, uh so on that note, uh I would like to make a motion for the board uh to vote on the compliance. Just on the the uh compliance issue in front of the board this evening for the property at twenty-nine Ever Ave, uh following the testimony and evidence presented to the board this evening. It is determined that the intent to convert to condos uh did take place, um and that the tenant's rights are protected under the ordinance, section seven dash sixty-three, um and that would entitle all three units in question uh to be granted the relocation fee applicable to their economic status. Uh, two units being twelve thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars, and unit thirteen or twenty-nine R, an additional five years uh at the property. Um, and one unit uh who did not uh provide testimony would be uh awarded seven thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-one cents uh in relocation fees at the end of their current lease.
Uh, Chair Zassol, if I, I've, before Attorney Thiel um speaks, I just want to make a few sort of clarifications. Um, the, should the tenant who has not participated um show that that she is entitled to enhanced protections, um she would still be entitled to that higher relocation amount, so I would just suggest um stating that that tenant is also entitled to enhanced protections, and just sort of make it more general, um and that includes the relocation fees based on, or I'm sorry, that that tenant is also that um has her rights vested, and that she's entitled to the relocation fees, just based on whether or not she's entitled to enhanced protection protections, um because I don't want to close the door on
Yeah.
the amount, um, and um, and I've lost my other my other point, so I'm gonna hand it off to Attorney Thiel, um, and uh try to remember what I was thinking of.
Thank you.
And uh ju- just one minor clear, I do think it would be helpful if the board can make a finding with respect to when the intent was formed. I know that we have heard varying testimonies that there was some statements made in May, there was the actual board notice that was provided on or about August third. Um, but I think with, for the purposes of calculating the notice period, it is relevant and may be more efficient to consider it the August third date.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so uh I I will start over on the the motion for the vote, and uh we'll try to squeeze all of this in.
If you'd like, sorry, Chair Zassol, if you, if you'd prefer, I can try to form a motion for the board, and you can let me know whether or not that's sort of.
Be great.
That, okay, all right, so um this would be a motion for the board um to make a finding that intent to convert was formed, um that tenants' rights have vested as of the um when they received their um notices of intent to convert, um that tenants in unit one and unit twenty-nine R have been found to be entitled to enhanced protections, um which includes a five-year notice period, and um the enhanced relocation fees, um the uh tenant in unit two um uh will have the opportunity to to, if she would like, to present her own documentation in case she's entitled to enhanced protections, but as of now, her her rights are also um, the board has found has vested, have vested just to see other tenants, um, and um I think I, I think I got everything. Attorney Thiel, did I miss anything? Uh Chair Zassol, is that?
Yes, that that covered it.
Okay, um so a motion um for the board, uh as I just stated, Chair Zassol?
Yes.
Vice Chair Byrne?
Yes.
Board Member Solis?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you very much, everyone, uh we truly appreciate everyone's testimony and our aesthetic to to all sides, so everyone have a good night, and if we can get a motion, uh, I'll motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
All right, meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Good night.